Like to call to order the Board of Equalization meeting for November 23rd, 2020. We will have an election of the Chair.
I'd like to nominate as Chair, Richard McGinnis.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Any other nominations? Seeing none, nominations are closed. Please call a roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
And Bowers?
Yes.
Okay. In accordance with LB 898, a copy of the open's meeting law is posted in the back of the room of the chamber. Each year, the Lincoln City Council passes a number of improvement district ordinances. Today, we are here to equalize the assessments for several such districts. The Downtown Core Management, the Downtown Maintenance, the Downtown Management, and the West Haymarket Downtown Maintenance Business Improvement Districts. These districts encompass the management activities performed through and contracted by the Downtown Lincoln Association. Once these projects have been completed, the cost is paid to the city through its special assessment revolving fund. It is then necessary for the city to recruit its costs from the benefited property owners and reimburse its revolving fund. These costs or assessments are computed by the Urban Development Department and presented to the city council for its review when sitting as the Board of Equalization, as we are now. The clerk will read a description of each district into the record, then a representative from the Urban Development Department will come forward and make a brief statement about the districts. After that, anyone wishing to make a statement may come forward, and please state your name, address, before making any comments. Thank you. Sony, would you like to go ahead and read?
Downtown Core Management Business Improvement District, generally bounded by N Street on the South and Pinnacle Arena Drive on the west, thence north and northeasterly along Pinnacle Arena Drive to 8th Street, then south along 8th Street to F Street, thence east along S Street to 9th Street, thence south along 9th Street to Q Street, thence east along Q Street to 10th Street, thence north along 10th Street to a point approximately mid-block between Q Street and R Street, thence east along said mid-block point to 14th Street, then south along 14th Street to Q Street, thence east along Q Street to Centennial Mall, then south along Centennial Mall to M Street, thence west along M Street to 13th Street, then south along 13th Street to L Street, thence west along L Street to 12th Street, thence north along 12th Street to M Street, thence west along M Street to 9th Street, thence north along 9th Street to N Street, thence west along N Street to Pinnacle Arena Drive. Downtown Maintenance District extending from 7th Street on the west to 17th Street, on the east and from R Street on the north to M Street on the south, including the properties abutting on the west side of 7th Street from N Street to R Street, the east side of 17th Street from Q Street to M Street, the north side of R Street from 7th Street to 10th Street, the south side of M Street from 8th Street to 17th Street, both sides of 13th Street from M Street to Lincoln Mall and all of Cornusker Square. Downtown Management Business Improvement District, generally bounded by N Street on the south and Pinnacle Arena Drive on the west, thence north and northeasterly along Pinnacle Arena Drive to 9th Street, then southeasterly along 9th Street and I-180 to a point approximately mid-block between R Street and Q Street, thence east along said midpoint to 14th Street, thence south along 14th Street to Q Street, thence east along Q Street to 17th Street, then south along 17th Street to K Street, thence west along K Street to 14th Street, then south along 14th Street to a point approximately mid-block between Lincoln Mall and H Street, thence west along said mid-block point to 10th Street, then south along 10th Street to K Street, thence west along K Street to 8th Street, thence north along 8th Street to N Street, thence west along N Street to Pinnacle Arena Drive. West Haymarket Downtown Maintenance District generally located along the west line of Outlot C, West Haymarket addition from approximately K Street on the south, north to N Street, and continuing north along the center line of Pinnacle Arena Drive to approximately 9th and 10th Streets, then south to R Street, thence west to 7th Street, then south to O Street, thence east to 8th Street, then south to the alley street, alley south of N Street, thence west to the east line of Outlot C, West Haymarket addition.
Now, we have our representative, Mr. Dan Marvin, Director of the Urban Development Department.
Good evening. I'm Dan Marvin. I'm with the Urban Development Department, and here's the, what we have are three districts that we've identified, the Downtown Maintenance Business Improvement District. This district was created by an ordinance adopted by the city council in 1997. Assessments are levied on an annual basis in our calculator on a front-foot basis. The proposed assessments are calculated on expenditures approved for payment for the period September 1, 2019 through August 31st, 2020. The West Haymarket Maintenance Business Improvement District, the district was created by an ordinance adopted by the city council in 2014. Assessments are levied on an annual basis and calculated on a front-foot basis. The proposed assessments are calculated on expenditures approved for payment for the period September 1, 2019 through August 31st, 2020. And the Downtown Core Management Business Improvement District, these districts were created by an ordinance adopted by the city council in 2016. Assessments are levied on an annual basis and calculated based on assessed valuations as determined by the Lancaster County Assessor. The proposed assessments are calculated on expenditures approved for payment for the period September 1, 2019 through August 31st, 2020. As a result...
(bell dings) As a result of this year's notices, three phone calls were received. One phone call was from a property owner wondering if a sodruck replacement was included as part of the assessment because their sidewalk needed repair. They were referred to the Lincoln Transportation and Utilities District. One property owner was new to the district and wondered if they were supposed to pay based on the notice. They were informed that this was just a notice and have approved would receive an invoice from the county treasurer. And one phone call was received from a property owner that experienced property destruction in this year's riots. It was acknowledged that there were, that they were clearly in the district, but they wanted to know if the assessment could be prorated due to the damage to the building. They were referred to the city clerk's office for assessment protest procedures. Those were the three calls that we received. Okay. Do we have any questions for Director Marvin? Seeing none, let's move on to public, uh, public statements. Anybody wishing to come forward may do so at this time regarding the Downtown Core Downtown Management BID projects. Seeing none, I say we close the public session regarding the Board of Equalization. So, Sony, I believe we need to vote on all these?
Correct. I would need a motion to move.
I move approval of all these items.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by councilperson Raybold. Do we have any questions or comments from any of our members? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Move to adjourn. Yeah, I move to adjourn, Sony Di.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, and we adjourn by councilperson Raybold. Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0.
You stand adjourned. Okay, we're moving on to our regular city council meeting for November 23rd, 2020. Let's please stand for the fudge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Again, welcome to the Lincoln City Council meeting for November 23rd, 2020. In accordance with LB 898, please be advised that there's a copy of the open meeting act posted in the back of the room by the northwest door. The order of the business of the city council will be as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, and whether they are speaking in favor or opposition of the item. Testimony will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Again, after all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions, items listed under third reading, and then second and on this last Monday of the month, immediately prior to adjournment. Anyone may speak on any issue that's not on the agenda for this date nor planned for any future date. And I just want everyone to know that the council is closely monitoring the COVID-19 in our community, and we will continue to make changes to protect the health of our public, the city staff, and their families. Seating in the council chambers will continue to be limited to ensure safe distancing. If the chambers are full, or if residents are unable or unwilling to wear masks, they may be asked to wait in the Bill Luxford Studio, Room 113, or in the commons area, and then be called to testify. When called upon, individuals may enter the city council chambers and approach the podium. After speaking, we are asking residents to exit the chambers through the doors on the left of the podium. This will make room for others to come in and speak on items. The open microphones are provided for those who wish to address the city council on a matter not on the agenda and not planned to be on any future agenda. Residents are reminded that we can receive correspondence through councilpacket@lincoln NE.gov, and they will be added to our agenda, and any constituent correspondence becomes part of the official public record, and will also be listed on our director's agenda. Okay, and Sony, do you have an announcement?
Due to the Thanksgiving Day holiday, the city council will not meet on Monday, November 30th, 2020, and limited seating is available in the council chambers, or you may wait in the Bill Luxford Studio or the hallway until your item is called. Then you can enter the council chambers and come to the podium. After you are finished speaking, you can exit to the chambers through the door to your immediate left.
Let's start with our consent and public hearing for our consent agenda.
Our consent agenda is Sections 1 and 2.
Is there anybody here that would like to come forward to speak on any of the items on our consent agenda?
Hi, I'm here to speak to the appointments to the Commission on Women and Gender that are on the agenda.
Yay.
There are 17 appointments...
It's your name.
Oh, sorry. Adele Burke, Mayor's Office. And there are 17 appointments that you'll see here. As you'll remember, the Commission on Women and Gender was added into the code previously. The Women's Commission, the previous iteration of this committee, was created by executive order by the mayor each year and then re-upped every year. So now it's in code, and each of these items that you'll see is for a different term length according to what was added to code. So there's a set of members that are in here for one-year terms, two-year, and then three-year, and then they'll have three years staggering after that point. So these members, of course, because there are 17 of them, we didn't want to pack the hearing room with them today, but they have ranged in length of their time on the old iteration of the committee from one year to a couple of decades, in the case of Kathy Ermarker and some of these other folks. So they're all, you know, have done a great service to our community so far, and we'd love to see them get appointed to this new iteration of the board.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Ms. Burke? Seeing none, thank you for coming down. Is there anybody else that'd like to come forward on any of the items on 1A through 2B? Okay, seeing none.
We have Wayne, Wayne's coming down.
Speedy Wayne.
It just takes a little while to get there from the back of the room.
Here, I thought you were parked.
Thank you.[1206.15][1206.15](laughter) Wayne Mixdorf, parking manager for the city, and the item that I'm here to speak on is the approval of the contract between the City of Lincoln and Republic Parking System. It's a new four-year contract that would begin actually on December 1st. Here, it's listed as October 15th through October 15th of 2024. That was done in order to begin the contract process. The contract will be amended to show that it's December 1st as the start date. It's, like I said, a four-year contract. There are three one-year extensions that potentially could be exercised. Republic Parking System is the current vendor. They've been with the city as our parking services management company since 2004.
Any questions for Mr., yes, councilperson Shob?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Mixdorf, thanks for coming forward. I understand what you're talking about. The contract will not start October 15th, it'll start December 1st. Will it also end on December 1st, 2024, or?
Well, November 30th, but yes.
That was my only real question. When does it end?
That's correct.
Any other questions for Mr. Mixdorf? I had one. Was this put out to bid, or was this part of a bid process?
Yes, it was. It was competitively bid. We had three eligible respondents, all excellent companies. It's, and we ultimately selected Republic to continue as the vendor. But Interstate Parking and Lance Parking were also bidding on it, excellent companies, but we decided to continue on with Republic.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to come forward on any of the items on 1A through 2B? Okay, seeing none, well, let's close the public hearing, and we will go to, what, vote on consent items.
Item 1A is appointing Nicole Trevina Flores, Sarah Godger, Mahi Nassim, Josephine Rodriguez, and Kathy Ermarker to the Commission on Women and Gender for terms to expire November 23rd, 2021, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded by councilperson Shob. Any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 1B, appointing Mary Harris, Leanne Pancharon, Pat Shepherd, Abby Swatsworth, and Michelle Tilly to the Commission on Women and Gender for terms to expire November 23rd, 2022, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by councilperson Ward. Any comments, questions? Please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 1C, appointing Becca Brune, Jessie, Jessica Hesse, Brittany Hodges-Bolkovic, Jennifer Georges, Amanda Krivda, Meg Michael Lightcheck. Thank you. Michael Lightcheck and Lindy Christensen, later, to the Commission on Women and Gender for terms to expire November 23rd, 2023, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by councilperson Washington. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 1D, approving a contract between the City of Lincoln and Republic Parking System, Inc. for parking management services, RFP number 20-178, for a four-year term beginning October 15, 2020 through October 14, 2024, introduced by Raybold.
So moved, but we did change the dates from December 1st, 2020 to November 30th. It should be 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the parking agreement with the dates of December 1 through November 30th of 2024. Any comments, questions?
Was that second from Washington?
Ward.
Ward.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 1E is approving the award of contract to the low bidder for the agreement between the City of Lincoln and the State of Nebraska Department of Transportation for the 27th and Fairfield and West Oak Street Bridges over Salt Creek Project, City Project Number 540029, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded by councilperson Christensen. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
I do have a motion to substitute...
Okay.
...resolution.
Right. I'd like to move the motion to amend number one. It's, reason for the request is K2 Real Estate Development LLC bid has been accepted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we amend to number one, and the reason is, you said?
It's already done?
It's a substitute resolution to indicate that K2 Real Estate Development, their bid was accepted.
Okay. Has that been seconded?
Yes.
Yes, it was seconded. Give us a chance to read this. Okay, any other comments or questions? Anything else? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll on the motion to amend.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 1F is setting the hearing date of Monday, December 21st, 2020 at 5:30 PM for Board of Equalization Meeting for Greenwood Street Special Assessment Water District, introduced by Shob.
So moved. Second. Been moved and seconded by councilperson Christensen. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
To be here on the 21st. Bauer? Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 1G is setting the hearing date of Monday, December 21st, 2020 at 5:30 PM for Board of Equalization Meeting for Cornusker Highway and Fletcher Avenue Special Assessments through District Number 1189, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we move forward with this. Was this, this wasn't the one that was polled?
No.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 1H is setting the hearing date of Monday, December 21st, 2020 at 5:30 PM for Board of Equalization Meeting for Saunders Avenue Special Assessment Repaving District Number 159, introduced by Shob.
So moved. Second. Been moved and seconded by councilperson Christensen. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 1I, this was the item for setting the hearing date that is being requested to be withdrawn by LTU.
Okay. So do you need a motion to withdraw?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to withdraw this item.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by councilperson Ward. Any other comments or questions? Please call.
Why is it being withdrawn?
This item was being withdrawn by the request of LTU, Lincoln Transportation and Utilities. This item was being withdrawn by the request of LTU, Lincoln Transportation and Utilities. I believe there are some more questions in regards to the assessments that -- in the properties, so they were requesting to withdraw it until they figure out those issues.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seen none, please call a roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 2A was introduced by Christiansen?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by councilperson Ward. Any questions, comments? Please call a roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. That ends our consent agenda.
Okay. Move on to public hearing for liquor resolutions.
I will be calling items 4A and 4B together, application of HopCat LN LLC doing business as HopCat Lincoln for a Class CG liquor license, and the related manager application of Jessica A. Wilcox located at 601 P Street.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a comment on this so the public understands what's going on here. Normally, we ask the applicants to appear for us, but after consulting with the chair and with our investigator Hofer, there are no real concerns about these items. And in the interest of making sure we don't overcrowd this meeting, we have informed those applicants, they do not need to be here unless they choose to be.
Okay. Is there anybody else who'd like to come forward on 4A or 4B to speak? Seen none, let's move on.
I'll be calling items 4C and 4D together, application of Casey's Retail Company doing business as Casey's General Store, 1934, for a Class D liquor license and the related manager application of Tina M. Stone located at 550 West Cornosker Highway.
Anybody like to come forward on 4C or 4D? Seen none, let's move on.
Item 4E and 4F, I'll be calling together, application of Original Grada LLC doing business as Original Grada for a Class C liquor license, and the related manager application of Matthew A. Escra located at 2755 Jamie Lane.
Anybody like to come forward on this liquor application? Nope, not seeing any, let's move on.
Item 4G and 4H, application of Great Plains Beef LLC doing business as Certified Piedmontese Beef for a Class CK liquor license, and the related manager application of Benjamin D. Maids located at 4841 North 84th Street.
Is there anybody who'd like to come forward on this liquor application? Mr. Chair, seeing none, I move approval of items 4A through H.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by councilperson Washington. Any comments or questions on any of these? Nope, not seeing any, let's please call a roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right, the way that worked, can we do that more often?
Yeah.
If we get great applicants.
We get applicants that are good like this, right? Okay. Let's move on to our public hearing on resolutions.
Item 5A is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for October 16 through 31st, 2020.
Is there anybody that'd like to come forward on 5A, accepting and approving the new impending claims? Seen none, let's move on.
Item 5B, Comprehensive Plan Conformance 20014, application of Urban Development Director to review as to conformance with the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan. A proposed amendment to the Lincoln Center Redevelopment Plan that adds the Terminal Building Redevelopment Project on property generally located at 9470 Street and 139 South 10th Street.
Thank you, Director Marvin.
Good evening, Dan Marvin with Urban Development. We have a real exciting project in the Terminal Building. This is the Terminal Building probably in its glory many, many years ago, and what we have is redevelopment project that will restore the existing first floor, it'll renovate floors 2, 3, and 4 for continuing office space, and then converts floors 5 through 10 into residential units. And there's a lot of work that they're going to do. They've been before the Historic Preservation Commission, and they've shown a number of areas on the facade that need some updating or some cleanup work, and I think that when they are finished, we will have a building that looks really fabulous with a, um, an awning that will stretch across there. You notice the windows will be an improvement on the streetscape. The other issue that we've been working through with the developer is anyone that walks on that area at 10th and O Street will notice that the sidewalk is in bad shape.
Yes.
It's in bad shape because there are vaults underneath those sidewalks, and it makes it difficult to fix that sidewalk there. So as part of this project, we will be able to address that issue too. So clean up a number of different items, add additional housing in the downtown. We're really excited about this project, and, you know, I could stop there, and if you have any questions. I also have to mention that David Levy from Bear Home, the attorney on this, is here. He doesn't need to come forward unless you have technical questions for him to address. So fire away.
Do we have any questions for Director Marvin? Seen none, Doc -- or Director, Doctor, I almost called you.
Promotion.
Director. One quick question. All we're voting on today is just an amendment to the downtown master plan. This is not the redevelopment agreement.
It's not the redevelopment agreement. That will be forthcoming perhaps later this year, and we should be able to have that before you, which will detail out the allocation of the TIF and all the other details that we generally discuss. What we are doing today is we are adopting a plan amendment into the downtown redevelopment plan that will allow us to enter into a redevelopment agreement with the developer.
Okay. Anybody else?
It sounds like a really exciting project, and I wish we had lots of questions for Mr. Levy because he made the trip. It feels like we should use his time, but.
Nah, we'll get him next time. Bring the redevelopment agreement on, then we can get to him. Okay, was there anybody else who'd like to come forward regarding this? This is just the one or both? 5B?
It's just the one.
It was just 5B.
5B.
Ms. Kinsey's here.
Jane Kinsey with Watch Dogs. What happens to all of this development downtown if it fails? You're going to have empty buildings. At this time, the economy is in -- under duress. In the past, when we've had a good economy, you've not been able to have retail downtown on the first floors. I believe the developer is going to be responsible for TIF or anything like that, but isn't the city going to be responsible for empty buildings downtown? So we believe that you should not approve this at this time. Wait until there is a good economy. Some people in town that are in the know think that in a few months, we're going to have a terrible downturn. We've already got businesses that are folding. And the athletic department of the university is not able to bring in any kind of entertainment to keep the economy going. So, you know, developers can ask, but the city council can say no. I understand that there was a coffee shop down in the Terminal Building, and it left because it couldn't get business. So we request that you think twice about this.
Thank you, Ms. Kinsey. Would anybody else like to come forward to speak on this item? Okay, move on to 5C.
5C, Comprehensive Plan Conformance 20015, application of Urban Development to review as to conformance with the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster Comprehensive Plan to amend the Lincoln Center Redevelopment Plan to include the 1040 O Street Redevelopment Project, including renovation and rehabilitation of a six-story building on property generally located at 1040 O Street.
Dan Marvin, Urban Development. We have another project in the downtown area, and it is a wonderful project itself. As everyone knows, this was what many of us called the LES Building for many years. It's where LES's operations are. They've been working on their campus outside of the downtown and put this building up for sale. It was purchased, and again, this would be a mixed-use building that would have office on the first floor or retail on the first floor, and the upper floors would be residential buildings. I think one interesting thing about the LES Building that has to go is that the top floor was added later, which any of you, I never knew this until we started engaged in this, but if you go and look at the building, well, Councilman McGinnis might have known that, but I wasn't here at the time when it was added.
Like Mr. McGinnis.
And it makes perfect sense when you see the picture now, but I didn't know this for many, many years, and I thought that was a fun little piece of trivia. Again, much of what will be included with the TIF, and again, as we talked with the previous one, this is a plan amendment that just allows us to engage in the conversation with the developer on the allocation of the TIF, and we would be bringing forward a redevelopment agreement at a later date. I think our interests are alleyways. There's an alley that is at off of 11th Street that I think that we've had discussions about doing some work on, and then I think there's some streetscape work as well that we would like to address as part of our TIF negotiations. And again, as with the previous issue, Ms. Danae Kilkowski is here, and she would be more than willing to come up, but if you have no additional questions, we can forego that as well.
Do we have any questions? Yes, councilperson Washington.
I do, thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Director Marvin or Ms. Kilkowski, I was curious. I -- I'm really interested in these kinds of projects downtown, but when they discuss leasing parking spaces from city garages, I am kind of curious about what that does to the city garage and.
Oh.
So could you tell me?
I would be happy to answer that question.
Where are the parking spaces coming from?
Well, first, we had a tenant in the LES Building previously that had parking rights in what I called the Centrum Parking Garage, but apparently that dates me. It's actually the Center Park Parking Garage. And they have spaces in Center Park, and Wayne, who was up here earlier, will constantly be evolving as turnover happens with different buildings downtown. People pick up and use parking stalls or they relinquish them. He helps manage our parking operations, and as part of the redevelopment agreement, we would anticipate contractually enter into an agreement to have them have a certain number to make their building work. And many of them are being -- will not be used because LES employees will be moving to a different site.
Thank you.
And to answer a previous question, we do think that housing in the downtown is a good use, it's a durable use, and this is why I think you've seen a number of projects in the pipeline that are taking and repurposing buildings from office and commercial uses into residential uses.
Any other questions for Mr. Marvin? Seen none. Any questions for the attorney? Okay, would anybody else like to come forward to speak on or against this project? Seen none, let's move on.
Item 5D, amending resolution number A92199 to reinstate the requirement that the revised plot plans show a private roadway in an outlaw for the special permit known as Special Permit 19025.
Good evening, Abby Latrell from the Law Department. You'll remember this resolution was before you a few months ago. This is the Hanan Property, 66th and Pine Lake. After the resolution was passed, Planning went to do their work to plot and plan a private roadway and discovered that under the subdivision ordinances, could not do that without a subdivision. So Planning Department and Law Department worked with the Hanans Council attorney Anne Post and revised the resolution that you passed to allow Planning to plat that private roadway, which was your intent. Ms. Post contacted you last week in packets late on Friday. I should have received that. I have a copy of that letter stating she has no objection.
Okay, do we have any questions? Thank you for coming down. Would anybody else like to come forward and speak on item 5D? Okay, seen none, let's move on.
We can now vote on these items. Item 5A is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for October 16 through 31st, 2020, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by councilperson Christiansen. Any comments or questions? Seen none, please call a roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 5B is Comprehensive Plan Conformance 20014, application of Urban Development Director to review as to conformance with the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan. A proposed amendment to the Lincoln Center Redevelopment Plan that adds the Terminal Building Redevelopment Project on property generally located at 9470 Street and 139 South 10th Street, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by councilperson Christiansen. Any comments, questions? Seen none, please call a roll.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 5C, Comprehensive Plan Conformance 20015, application of Urban Development to review as to the conformance with the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster Comprehensive Plan to amend the Lincoln Center Redevelopment Plan to include the 1040 O Street Redevelopment Project, including renovation and rehabilitation of a six-story building on property generally located at 1040 O Street, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by councilperson Christiansen.[1701.22]
as Special Permit 19025, Introduced by Raybold. So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second by Councilperson Christiansen. Any comments, questions? Okay. Call a roll, please.
Bowers.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Christiansen.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item five D is Amending Resolution Number A92199 to Reinstate the Requirement That the Revised Plot Plans Show a Private Roadway in an Outlet for the Special Permit Known as Special Permit 19025, Introduced by Raybold. So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second by Councilperson Christiansen. Any, yes. I'd just like to say, this has been a long time coming. Any other comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Christiansen.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item five D is Amending Resolution Number A92199 to Reinstate the Requirement That the Revised Plot Plans Show a Private Roadway in an Outlet for the Special Permit Known as Special Permit 19025, Introduced by Raybold. So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second by Councilperson Christiansen. Any, yes. I'd just like to say, this has been a long time coming. Any other comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Christiansen.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item five D is Amending Resolution Number A92199 to Reinstate the Requirement That the Revised Plot Plans Show a Private Roadway in an Outlet for the Special Permit Known as Special Permit 19025, Introduced by Raybold. So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second by Councilperson Christiansen. Any comments, questions? Okay. Call a roll, please.
Bowers.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Christiansen.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item five D is Amending Resolution Number A92199 to Reinstate the Requirement That the Revised Plot Plans Show a Private Roadway in an Outlet for the Special Permit Known as Special Permit 19025, Introduced by Raybold. So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second by Councilperson Christiansen. Any, yes. I'd just like to say, this has been a long time coming. Any other comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Christiansen.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to ordinances, second reading.
Item seven A is Amending Chapter 2.56 of the Lincoln Municipal Code Relating to Restrictions on Participation in Lotteries by Amending Sections 2.56.010, 2.56.020, and 2.56.030, to Add Definitions to Define Key Terms and To Allow Agents or Employees of Satellite Location or Sales Outlet to Play the Lottery When Not on Duty, and Repealing Sections 2.56.010, 2.56.2.020, and 2.56.030 of the Lincoln Municipal Code as Heretoe Existing.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilperson Michael.
So I brought forward, I brought forward this ordinance on behalf of a Northeast Lincoln constituent. His question was an easy one, and that was, why can I not play Keno at my place of employment while I'm off duty? So we started to work together in navigating city and state laws to determine where this ban came from, why it was put in place, and is this common in other communities? Our state law prohibits employees of a satellite sales location from playing Keno while the employee is on duty. The state statute allows for the city or the establishment to have more restrictive player participation rules. The city has a prohibition on employees playing while they are off duty, and this is not standard regulation throughout our state, and other municipalities do not have this same ban on businesses. Uh, this was put in place to keep the appearance of the game's integrity. However, neither the Keno writer of the establishment or the customer can affect the outcome of a game, nor can they predict what numbers will be drawn for any Keno game. Keno is streamed and then broadcasted remotely to more than 240 satellite locations in eastern Nebraska, so there is no opportunity for collusion. Currently, you are able to play Keno at a location down the street from where you're getting off work, and it's showing the exact same game. Each location is paid a percentage on Keno volume, and from folks that I've spoken with, employees would much rather play at a place where they feel comfortable and give back to their place of employment rather than go to a competitor. This allows for more freedom to, for businesses and could also lead to an increase in Keno volume at a number of locations, which is important, especially as our community recovers economically. In funding, uh, this could increase funding for the positive community work that Keno does in our community. This change is a simple one. Allow business owners to determine if employees are allowed or disallowed to play Keno at their establishments while they are off work and not have the city make that call for them.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward to speak on this item, on number seven A? Any questions from council? Okay.
Thank you.
Seeing none. This will move on till next meeting. Let's move to seven B.
Seven B, Change of Zone 08057B, Application of Azam Kalaf to amend the existing university placed planned unit development to allow for existing motorized vehicle sales on the property generally located at 2928 North 48th Street.
Thank you. Ms. Kalkowski.
Good evening, members of the council. Danae Kalkowski, I'm appearing today on behalf of Azam Kalaf, and Mr. Kalaf is in the audience with me here today, too. Given the seating arrangements, he's just going to stay where he's at. Uh, Mr. Kalaf owns the property on 2928 North 48th Street. So it's a little piece right here. The property is located within the University Place Planned Unit Development. He has submitted an application to the city requesting an amendment to the PUD that would allow motorized vehicle sales, uh, to continue to be located on the property, um, and the reason we're asking this waiver is because otherwise we're located within 100 feet of adjacent residential to, excuse me, to the east. Uh, the amendment's going to allow the automobile sales that has existed on the property for over 20 years to continue. Uh, unfortunately, Mr. Kalaf was unaware that the automobile sales use on the property was not compliant with city zoning when he started leasing the property back in 2014 and then subsequently purchased it in 2018. He recently learned of the noncompliance when he came in to get a building permit to do, uh, paving on some of the parking lot area. He's already made significant investment in the property. Um, there, there is a residence. It's a little light, but here's North 48th Street. There is a house that sits on the front of the property closest to 48th Street, and the automobile sales is toward the middle and the back. Um, he's already made significant investment into the house, um, changing it basically from a six-dwelling unit, uh, home to just one, one dwelling unit. Uh, he and his brother are working together to, uh, re-side the outside of it. I think you'll see that's partially done, but they're working on that together and trying to finish that. I think in general, since he purchased the property, his goal has been to continue to make improvements to it. Um, he's willing to continue to make additional improvements to the property as conditions to the city's approval of a PUD amendment. Uh, first of all, he's willing to improve the streetscape along North 48th Street. Um, he's going to be establishing a front yard in the front of the house all the way to the property line, uh, removing some pavement and gravel from the front yard and installing a landscape screen to the parking area, so all of the area now in front of, along, uh, North 48th Street will be grass. He'll be installing parking barriers, which keeps the parking out of the front yard. Uh, second, he's planning to remove the driveway right now that comes off North 48th Street to improve traffic safety from this location. And third, he's going to be improving some addition, some screening to the neighbors to the east by installing a fence that would be along where there will be parking stalls. And then finally, as I mentioned, he's reducing the permitted dwelling units in the home from six down to one. The automobile sales has been operating on this property for over 20 years, um, and he, Mr. Kalaf has, as he's been operating it for the last several years, has received no complaints from neighbors, uh, with respect to his use of the property. Um, amending the permit just allows him to continue the use that's been operating there and will allow him to continue to provide his livelihood, um, for him, uh, and we think with these conditions that he's willing to implement on the site will not detrimentally impact the surrounding neighborhood. We did meet with the University Place Community Organization Board on their Zoom meeting on, in October, had a nice discussion with them, just kind of basically let them know what we were doing. We also sent neighbor, or excuse me, letters to all our neighbors within 200 feet, which we didn't receive any feedback from. Um, just good questions about what was going on from the, um, board. I think several of them noted there's other automobile sales really within close proximity to this location, so we really didn't receive any, you know, negative comments or opposition to the request, uh, from anybody that we talked to. Uh, this was on consent agenda at Planning Commission, so it was approved as part of consent agenda, um, and we're asking for your approval also. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Kalkowski? Nope, seeing none.
Thank you.
Does anybody else like to come forward on this item, seven B?
Good evening. Jim Bunch, BUNCH, 5042 Knox Street. I live in the University Place area, right around the corner, um, and you look at what's happening in North Lincoln and you can contrast what University Place looks like on North 48th Street versus what College Park looks like on South 48th Street. Quite a contrast. We have a school there, we have residential areas, uh, why we need a car lot in a residential area just doesn't, doesn't compute for me. I don't think it, uh, brings anything to the neighborhood. We can talk about North 48th Street traffic. I, you know, we've done a lot of really good things in our area. The mixed-use development that's been constructed at 48th and Holdrich and 48th and Leighton really has been an enhancement, done a lot of good things for the, for, for our neighborhood. Uh, another car lot, yeah, I know, it, it's been there for a while. There was one across the street. He, he moved over onto Cornhusker. We got rid of one. Now we still, it'd be, I, I had no idea that, that, uh, until I saw this on the, uh, agenda that it wasn't, uh, that, that they weren't in compliance with zoning. I, I would, as, as a, as a resident, I would not be in favor. Same thing happened when the restaurant at Adams and, uh, Cornhusker closed and they turned it into a car lot. You had probably a hun, several hundred cars out there. You go down Cornhusker, I, it, you know, let's, let's just, let's just put a, let's just put a car lot in every neighbor, in every residential neighborhood. I'd, I'd be interested to hear how my councilman in District One, how we, how you feel about this, about this, uh, car lot being, and, and the comments that I've made about the difference between North and South Lincoln. I'd really like to pave North 48th Street. That's worse street than Lincoln. We can pave Gladstone, we can pave Holdrich, we can't pave North 48th Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bunch. Anybody else like to come forward to speak on this item? Any comments for staff or others at this point from our city council? Okay, seeing none.
Actually, I do have one for staff and, um, staff.
As a Mr. Carey or?
I was thinking Mr. Carey, because I was curious about the length of time this has been a lot, car lot.
You can fill in for Mr. Carey.
I'm going to rebuttal, too.
Yeah, you'd have a chance to rebut.
They, they, they were able to find, oh, they were able to find back in an old building permit, there was reference to car lot on it clear back in 19, I think, 96. Um, at that time, I don't think it was caught at the time that because of, I don't know if it wasn't made big enough that building and safety didn't catch that that's what they were turning the little building in the back into auto sales, but if you look at the site plan, there was a sign on there for auto sales. So we know it's been, it's been there for a long, long time, and so all of the, you know, development that's occurred around it or things that are around it, they've been working, I guess, living harmoniously for the last 20 years, um, and so we don't think that just allowing the use to continue is going to be detrimental to the neighbors, especially in fact with all of the conditions he's willing to do to actually improve the property and improve the look along North 48th Street with the removal of that driveway and the placement of the grass and the, and the yard along North 48th Street. So, um, it's an unfortunate incident. Somebody's livelihood depends upon being able to continue the use, um, and I think it can be done without really detrimentally impacting the neighbors in the manner that we're proposing.
Yes.
So I just, I, I'm just trying to be clear. So this, uh, this has already been operating for 20 years as it is, um, and this is just a, a cleanup because it wasn't permitted appropriately when it first started.
Right. So, so in fact, the house has been used as like a six-unit home, so in fact, the density on that is going way down, but the car use toward the back, yes. Because you have residential to the east of the alley, across the alley, um, it's too close to, um, the residential to have a car lot, a car sales use under the zoning code today.
So what would happen if we did deny it? I mean, like, would he have to just close up shop then, or what, kind of, can you walk me through what would happen if we did deny it?
Then he wouldn't be able to get his license to sell vehicles there, because he wouldn't be able to get the letter from the city saying that he meets the zoning requirements.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilperson Schob.
I'm sorry. Was Mr., Councilwoman Washington was ahead of me with a question for Mr. Carey.
And Mr. Carey has come into the room.
Okay.
Yeah. Mine, can wait till after that, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Washington.
You could have gone first if it's for Danae.
Either one.
Okay.
David Carey, Director of the Planning Department.
Um, Mr. Carey, could you walk us through the, uh, the process here? So if it's been a car lot since sometime in the 90s, so it's 20-some years it's been a car lot, if, uh, if we were to approve this, would you, when would it not be a car lot? When would it be in compliance? Would it ever be?
The, the way that this has been proposed for approval is that if there was ever to be a, um, a redevelopment of the lot into a different use, then the, the car sales use would, would go away, would not be allowed any further. So if there was a, basically a reconstruction on the lot, that that would not be allowed. What is being proposed is a, an agreement that would allow for this longstanding use to continue more or less in its current state, but we took this opportunity to allow for improvements to the site, uh, improving the parking, uh, the screening as Danae referred to, um, and then lowering the density in the actual residential unit that's there. So we took the opportunity to improve what has been there for over 20 years, um, but this use would not be allowed if there is going to be any redevelopment of the site, so it does not have, um, continued standing if there is a significant turnover on the site.
Okay. So if the applicant were to take the, the house, which they've taken from six units to one unit, and decide at some point four to, four or five years down the road that they'd like to make it a triplex, would that be considered a significant redevelopment causing the car lot to be out of compliance?
That is a good question. Um, I, what is being agreed to is that the residential unit will only be used for one unit moving forward, so if it was, it was a proposal to increase that, at the very least, it would have to be approved, that change would have to be approved. The, 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 the full limitation is on the, any expansion or re, redevelopment of the car use, car sales use.
Okay. I'm done for now. Thank you.
Okay. Councilperson Schob.
Oh, oh, me, pick me. Mr. Carey, mine's going to be much easier. I've got my Google Maps up and I'm looking at this image of the building there, and I can't figure out what it is on the north side of this property. Is that residential, commercial, retail?
On the north side, the north side is still in the B3 PUD. That is the, uh, University Place PUD.
And B3 means they can, it's a business related?
Uh, mixed use is allowed, basically.
And then on my, my Google image shows on the south side is Kelly's Produce?
Yes, and so, uh, immediately to the north, immediately to the south is still the B3 PUD. If you go to the, to the east, that's where you enter into the residential.
Into residential. And this apartment building is being converted to a single-family residence?
Correct.
So it's going to be a little island of residential in, in a B3 with some exceptions?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Or? Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to come forward from the audience? If not, would the applicant like to respond at all?
The only thing I guess I would add is, is that we're fully aware of the limitations on the use, and there is language that was added to the PUD amendment that says, he doesn't have any right to expand it. Uh, if, if he needed to repair what he has there today, he's allowed to do that, but he's not allowed to expand it, tear the house down and, and expand the parking lot toward 48th Street without coming back and asking for a whole nother amendment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We move on to the next item.
Item seven C, Approving the Real Estate Purchase Agreement Between the City of Lincoln and Donna Holdeck for the Sale of City-Owned Property Located at 2511 B Street.
Director Marvin, thank you for coming down.
Dan Marv, I'm getting my exercise today.
I know. Getting your steps in.
Um, Dan Marvin, Urban Development. This is something that we don't do very often. I think I've been up here in my tenure, which is not too long, but a couple of times before where we wind up acquiring a home that we have loans on through our CDBG program. And in this particular case, um, we acquired this house, we did some rehab, and it's in the process of being, um, sold to a first-time homebuyer, and in the process, we did a little bit of work in it.
It had great hardwood floors. We did some kitchen work to bring the building up to code, and then put in a daylight basement, so there was a third bedroom in the basement, and finished off the basement. Our cost in it was about $124,679 with the first mortgage and the, and the emergency repair loan that we had on the previous property. Sale price, we had $37,000 in rehab expenses, plus there was some lead-based paint in this building that we had to remove as well. The previous owner did have a downpayer assistance loan on the property. Sometimes those dissolve after a while after they've been in the property. So, our cost is about what we're gonna get from it for $130,000, and we think we've made an improvement in the neighborhood and kept it a single-family home for the neighborhood as well. So, we're pleased, we hope you could approve the sale.
Any questions for Mr. Marvin? Nope. Thank you for coming down. Is there anybody else who'd like to come forward to speak on this item? You're not gonna speak on the item? Okay. Sir? It's not a seat that's available to sit in. There's some to the back, over there. Could you take one that's available, please? Can you move back to one of the seats that we're asking you to sit in?
Hey, you're in my seat.
I am in your seat. Okay.
Yeah. I'll trade you.
Now, could you please move over to a seat that's?
I'm asking.
No?
Okay.
Okay. I'm asking you again nicely to please go to a seat that is designated.
Please. Let me have my seat.
No.
You step it out.
There's still seats back there that would be available for you to sit in.
You do.
No, I'm, I'm fine. Would you please take your seat? Take a seat back there? Sergeant of Arms? We have seats back there available for you to sit in. Those are not available to sit in. Okay, everyone, we're gonna take a recess at this time.
Come speak on seven seats that would like to come speak. Okay, that would end the public hearing. Move on to ordinance's third reading.
Item eight A is amending chapter 4.08 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to the Citizens Police Advisory Board by amending section 4.08.010 and section 4.08.030 to add additional board members and to clarify filing and meeting requirements introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second by Councilperson Raybold. Do we have any questions, thoughts? Councilperson Raybold.
Yes, I, first of all, I do want to thank to so many who submitted their concerns and their support for increasing the number of representatives on the Citizen Police Advisory Board, CPAB, from seven to nine members. I really thank you for taking the time. I want to assure you that we have read all your comments. However, what is most shocking to me is the misinformation expressed in these emails. The mayor's budget and the one that the city council unanimously approved fully funds the police department. We also supported the grant to increase the number of officers. The mayor and the city council fully support our police department and are tremendously proud of their service to our city. It is because of the ongoing community outreach well-established by our police department that our community is fortunate enough to have had so few complaints. It is also because of these continued community outreach efforts and other efforts of greater inclusivity and greater transparency that Chief Blimeister has supported and encouraged, and it is what we all embrace that has led to an exemplary standard for our community that we can all be proud of. The mayor is not stacking the board. We are fortunate in Lincoln to have citizens that are engaged and care about all aspects of our community and care about the well-being of those in our community and who also care deeply about our first responders. The mayor is reappointing the three current members that were appointed by a previous mayor to the CPAB whose terms happen to be up. So no, she is not appointing five individuals. She is reappointing the three existing members, and she is requesting we expand the number on the board from seven to nine. It would be those two new members that she would appoint. We have heard from many that applaud this effort and support even more transparency and inclusivity. Our goal has always been to represent and reflect the makeup of those in our community that we have been elected to serve. We currently receive so few complaints because our law enforcement team is doing a very good job. There is absolutely no basis in truth that allowing folks to document and email their concern will cause a dramatic increase in the number of complaints. Why? Because our law enforcement does a very good job. We are not distracting our officers nor our resources as this committee is a well-established committee that meets quarterly and has done so for more than forty years. This is not an agenda item of Black Lives Matter nor some extremists. The mayor has been accused of making this addition of two members political. The only ones that are making this political are the ones saying so. If we increase the number of representatives on the Commission on Women and Gender, would the mayor be accused of stacking or making those appointments political? If we increase the number on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, is that being political? We are a growing and diverse community. That is one of our greatest selling points. Lastly, threatening those of us that vote for this increase of two members for the CPAB, as the author claims, is therefore further justification for being recalled, is simply incomprehensible. I wouldn't be doing this job if I didn't care about the future of our city and our law enforcement and using my best judgment that I was elected to do, and that is why I am supporting this increase.
Yes, Roy, Christensen. So, a lot of people chimed in by email in opposition. Two, over two-hundred-and-fifty. Four people chimed in in support by emails. But the reason I'm going to vote against this, in spite of all that, I'm voting against it because when the mayor's office representative testified, I don't think the mayor's office presented any compelling reason that the system is broken. And I believe if it's not broken, don't fix it.
Anybody else? Yes, Ms. Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am going to support these changes. I think that it is common sense to increase the accessibility of this program. In the last seven months, the city has taken great strides to digitize and make more accessible many city services. And contractors can now come to Building and Safety through their own computer and apply for a building permit. This is just a process to enter in a complaint. It does not mean that the complaint is a valid complaint, but it does make it accessible and easy for folks who have a complaint to file the complaint. There is a very good system for weeding out those complaints which are frivolous, and I don't believe that will be a concern. I am voting for accessibility and transparency to make this process easily available so that folks don't need to be hemmed in or barred from filing a complaint because of transportation issues, employment issues, or some other schedule that makes it difficult for them to come downtown and go to the mayor's office to fill out a complaint form. Many other things are digitized. This is just one more.
Anybody else would like to comment on this? Okay, seen none. Let's call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
No.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Christensen? Oh, excuse me, McGinnis.
No.
Can I have an extra one?
Yeah.
You for Roy.
Confuse the two white guys.
Sorry, sorry. Motion carried, five-two.
Point of order.
Okay. Next up, eight B.
Eight B, amending section 7.06.110 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to insurance required for ambulance services to reduce the cost of insurance to operators while maintaining adequate protection for the city. And repealing section 7.06.110 of the Lincoln Municipal Code as heretofore existing, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second by Councilperson Shob. Any other questions or comments at this point? Okay, hearing none. I think this, hearing from the testifiers last week, I think this is a good thing. So, please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven-zero. Item eight C, creating paving district number 2635 in Fletcher Avenue from Cornosker Highway to 84th Street, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second by Councilperson Raybold. Is this the one that they want us to hold or not?
No, this is the paving district that had a unanimous support of each of the landowners.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay. Any other thoughts, questions? Please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Ward?
Not up there.
Yes. Shob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven-zero. Item eight D is creating alley paving district number 365 for the north-south alley between Ninth Street and Tenth Street from Park Avenue to South Street, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second by Councilperson Raybold. Do we have any questions? For anybody?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I do have questions. I realize that we, the hearing was last week, and I would, I had some questions for staff. I'm curious about the recalculation, and I actually, we're going to give her a moment. She will, she's, I'm sure she's in her office. But I have a question about the recalculation. If we were to remove one person from, or one, or two households from the paving district?
Can we do that?
I don't know. I have a question for our attorney.
Question.
About that. Two of the people in the district do not use their alley access. It is fenced off, and they have driveways onto an adjoining street.
Have they requested to be removed from?
Yes.
One is, yeah, they were here at the meeting.
So, I wanted to know if it's...
Against the district.
Should we go on to the next item, giving the attorney time to come down?
We've got a motion on the floor. I don't think we could have another motion on the floor until we do something with this motion.
Yeah, attorney and...
Ms. Elliott?
L T U.
Attorney or L T U?
City Attorney and L T U, please. Ms. Elliott.
Well, it can be moved to table this.
Perhaps we...
Ah, here comes our senior attorney.
He has his own music as he approaches.
I'm feeling in a zen state.
Let me just, Yohanty Christie, City Attorney. I don't know that I, I'll do the best that I can.
Mr. Christie, do you know if it's possible to excuse someone from a paving district? Do we have that right?
What I, what I don't want to do is just give you an answer to give you an answer. What I'd like to tell you is that I can get back to you on that specific question. I don't want to misstate.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, I'm given the, I don't know if we're going to get a complete answer on this this evening. But I would then move to table this until our next meeting.
I'd like to second that.
It's been moved and tabled to our next meeting, this item.
Then we just take it up at that point as if it had been moved in that meeting.
Yes.
We haven't, it's just that one...
We'll have to vote to take it off the table at that meeting. But it will be on our agenda.
Right. Tableau is different than pending?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, the motion is to table. Until next meeting, please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven-zero.
Thank you.
Item eight E, establishing a moratorium on new applications for special permits for alternative to imprisonment facilities until July 2nd, 2021, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second by Councilperson Raybold. Yes.
I would like to make the motion to amend number one that was handed out by Sonny.
Motion number one.
Basically changes the name.
It just, it's a name change to reflect the changes in the Lincoln Municipal Code, particularly as it relates to deleting the term "alternative to imprisonment" from chapter 27 and creating the "transitional living facility use" that was passed by the city council on November 2nd, 2020 in bill number 20-238. So it's just changing the name from "alternative to imprisonment" to "transitional living facility."
The motion needs a...
Wait a minute.
A second.
I'm just trying to figure this out. So it is a, a...
A substitute.
Is it ordinance two-five, eight-E?
Yes. So we're, you are... And then, and I believe there will be another second motion to amend.
Okay, so we do have a motion to amend. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved in second that we amend eight-E with motion to amend number one.
And again, it really is just the name change.
But this is not talking at all about a moratorium on anything.
No, no, this is name change.
This is a name change because in the bill that's before us, it calls it "alternative to imprisonment facilities", and that's not the correct terminology. And then there's going to be another second motion to amend that talks about timing.
Any other comments on this motion to amend? Everybody understand it?
I understand it as a, calling it what it is now legally called.
Yes. Okay. Yes, Councilperson Shob.
We had a moratorium in place for alternatives to prison, and the original motion was to extend that. If we're renaming, is this a whole, totally, brand-new thing now?
Well, it, for clarification, and Mr. Carey, sir, it is a substitute ordinance. So it takes whatever ordinance on the moratorium to extend and changes it. The only thing that changes is really the use of the name of changing "alternative to imprisonment facilities" to "transitional living facilities" to make it sync up with the items that we passed in November.
But since it is a, an amendment to eight-E, if eight-E fails to pass, then this amendment goes away.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we're just calling it, I mean, the name's changed when we passed. So this is...
Once we pass it, the name will change, and this ordinance will be in, will be on the book.
Not if we don't pass eight-E. Because this is an amendment to eight-E.
Right.
Then there will be...
Director Carey.
Yeah.
David Carey, Director Planer. I think maybe just to hopefully bring some clarity to this, the action that was taken by this body on November 2nd changed the code for this type of use. So there no longer is a "alternative to imprisonment" use in the code. So to adopt something that has that language in it would not make any sense. It would, it would, so the work that was done was to make sure that if there was something approved today, we don't know if that will happen yet, but if something were to be approved, it should be referencing the updated code, and that is the transitional living use.
Okay.
Thank you for catching that.
Yes.
I'd like Mr. C to come up and help a little bit, too. I enjoy what Mr. Carey said. I think the world of him.
Didn't stay at the Hall of Fame, did you, David?
Tomorrow night.
Tennessee City Attorney's Office, happy to answer any questions you might have.
So, I, Mr. Chair, we, last week we had a first reading on something with a totally different name. We were extending a moratorium on something. Are we now creating a moratorium rather than extending? Or did, or am I just reading that wrong all over the place?
And you're going to, you create or you extend, either way, your moratorium would go from November 16th until July 21st. This amendment was put together because when, when the original ordinance was drafted, the code said "alternatives to imprisonment". It wasn't clear what was going to happen on November 2nd, and so we drafted it to read as the code read at that time. That has obviously changed, and in fact, that, that, that bill is actually in effect at this point because fifteen days have passed. And so the code now reads "transitional living facility", "alternative to imprisonment" is no longer a great term in the city code. So, so Director Carey is correct. It doesn't make a lot of sense in its current form, so that's why we put together the motion to amend.
Okay. Yes, Councilperson Raybold.
Mr. C, if we approve this motion to amend, we're not approving the moratorium, right? We're just changing the language in that moratorium, but we're not approving the moratorium yet.
Yeah, this is, this motion to amend is literally just to make this make sense from a wording standpoint. This is not the substance of the moratorium. This, this includes the language of the moratorium as a substitute ordinance, but approving the motion to amend is not, is not the main motion yet.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the motion to amend? Seen none, please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven-zero.
Okay, now we move on to the main motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Before we move on to the motion, I'd like to make a motion to amend.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to amend line 14 of this new ordinance where it reads Lincoln Municipal Code 27.62.050 shall hereby be suspended until July 1st, 2021. I'd like to change that date and modify that to January 31st, 2021.
I'd like to second that.
Been moved in second that we change the moratorium date to January 31st?
I'd like to speak if you would allow, sir, just for a moment. Thank you very much. We spoke with lots of people over the last couple of weeks talking about why we should or should not extend the moratorium. We did pass new rules on transitional living. We use the powers that the city council and the city have to regulate based on planning and zoning and building and safety. But many members of our community would like us to talk more about programming and other issues related to the residents of those communities. While I feel that is the responsibility of the state of Nebraska, residents of our city asked us to consider giving them time to talk with the state legislature to perhaps work on those items. I think a six-month moratorium is like when you were in high school and you had a term paper due at the end of the semester. You started on that term paper the day before the end of the semester, and if we give the legislature six months, I'm not confident that they would start on it before the end of that term. I do appreciate members of our community asking for a little bit more time and the way the legislature operates. We should know by the end of January whether they plan to seriously adjust these issues or not. And so I think a little bit more time, sixty days rather than one-hundred-and-eighty, is somewhat of a fair compromise. I'm skeptical that we will be able to get the things done, but I have hope that we can at least try.
Councilperson Raybold.
And, and I'm going to support this. I know that we had an issue raised recently about one of the facilities by one of the neighbors, and there was some concern about, okay, we think that they have more than six people in this home. Who, who can I get help with on verifying or validating if this is the case? And so I turned this request over to Building and Safety and Planning, and it was, it was very confusing. The, the Building and Safety Department is somewhat limited. They're there to inspect for building and safety issues and not necessarily validate or verify. And I, and Mr. Blaha responded to me today, giving me a number of numbers that we can share with our constituents should they have other complaints. But I wonder if Mr. Carey could come up and talk to us a little bit more of the processes that we can work with and that, I guess, would also be included in discussions as we move forward with this period of reflection, not only with concerns from on the state side with accountability and standards, but also how we're going to direct people during this period of time if they have any concerns about what's going on in their neighborhood.
Sure. I think, I think the best way to answer that is just to kind of walk through what, what was just approved in November and how that will be handled, because that is a different setup than what already is allowed or, and would continue to be allowed to happen. First, I would start with, there's a significant difference between three or less unrelated individuals in a residential unit. That is allowed by right. Certainly, there are individuals that are going through state programs that fall into that setting. And we do not have regulations on the books that would allow us to do much with that because three or less unrelated is allowed in residential districts. So that's, you have to put that aside. Once you get above that, then we're talking about most likely group homes or now transitional living uses. We do not have any approved transitional living uses, nor do we have any applications for that use. So that is a new use. The previously termed "alternatives to imprisonment", we have one of those approved now. So we do, we didn't receive any additional applications for that either. So we have one of these activities total in our community. Under the new language that was just approved, that laid out those conditions of approval as well as that administrative permit that needs to, is required to go through the planning department. So we will be tracking those whenever they come in. Again, we don't have any more applications for that use in right now. So technically, we have zero transitional living uses in this city of Lincoln. I think what we're, what a lot of what people are thinking about and talking about or commenting on are existing allowed group homes. And so that is a different use than transitional living. So, under those conditions, so if there is a transitional living use, certainly, the, one of the, one of the options for that use is to call the planning department directly, because we will have been involved in those, and we will have done some level of administrative permit, and so we certainly can take those calls and answer those questions. The other option is to contact the Building and Safety Department when it comes to potential complaints that likely are coming from either approved and allowed group homes, which we know there are many of those out there, or they could be just a residential setting in which there are individuals that are, have going through some level of programming at the state level that also would be allowed. But certainly, the Building and Safety Department can field those questions and comments and concerns, and then there's a determination of, is there a potential violation or not? And certainly, at that point, Building and Safety staff can certainly do an inspection at that point. So that's generally kind of what Mr. Blaha shared with you earlier today. That's kind of where we're at right now with the setting that we have with the different uses.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And there others?
Yes. Mr. Matt?
I don't have any questions specifically for you, Director Carey. I just want to make a statement. I really appreciate the amendment that's been proposed, but I will not be supportive of it because I don't believe that this moratorium gets to the core issue and the core problem that, that folks are trying to solve. Based on our conversations over the past couple of months and the fact that we already did, we have had a moratorium on this, one of the things that we've heard over the past few months is that the concern that there are folks that, who are not operating within current regulations and also not operating in the regulations that we passed a couple of weeks ago. I've heard stories where, you know, there's nine people staying in one. I've heard stories where there are, there's not enough supplies available for folks who are staying there. But I don't believe that because we put in a moratorium, it's going to deter the bad actors and the folks that are already not going through the appropriate permitting. actors and the folks that are already not going through the appropriate permitting process. I believe that the only people that we, that will be deterred by putting in this moratorium are going to be the good actors who are following regulations. So I don't believe that this solves the problem that we're trying to address. And the problem that is trying to be addressed are those bad actors that aren't following the regulations and that are taking advantage of people. Those folks that are operating illegally are not going to be dissuaded by a moratorium because they're already essentially breaking our ordinance. This just would deter the good actors from going through the appropriate permitting process and providing this needed service for folks who are leaving incarceration.
Thank you. Councilperson Ward.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to comment on a couple of things that have been said and why, and let you, and why I am supporting the moratorium. I appreciate, first of all, Councilman Shob, your compromise amendment. That's very helpful and something I can certainly agree to and will support. But from my point of view, I did not even support the plan, although I know the planning department has done a lot of work and we've talked about this a lot. But we're just not, I just feel we're just not there and we need more time. And Councilwoman Bowers, I agree with you, this doesn't solve the problem. But what it does do from my point of view is give us some more time to work with our providers, to work with our partners and state government, whether it be the legislature, the probation office, DHHS, these are our partners and government people. So we need that time to collaborate with them as well as our providers and the community and keep educating one another as to what this means so we can move forward and keep doing it right. And I just think we need that time. And I just appreciate all that's been done. I'll also be supporting this amendment and I wish it were for longer, but it's a great compromise amendment. So thank you for that, Councilman Shob. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else would like to speak at this point? Councilperson Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I introduced the moratorium, I guess, a few weeks ago because I felt like some of my council, fellow council members had said that the community has asked us, please, to take another look. And when planning put together the new role, the new rules for transitional housing, I felt like they'd done a good job dealing with the zoning piece. The rules on permitting and inspection that are in front of building and safety were another good piece of that, but we're still missing a little bit more information from the state. It's not our role, it's the state's role. I'm not suggesting the city of Lincoln should pick that up. I do like the amendment to the moratorium because it does ask, it gives us a window to know whether or not the state will pick this up. I like the fact that we will know in the first ten days of the session whether or not this is something that they will address this session. And for that reason, I will support the moratorium. But I will understand, once that period has come to the end, the end of January, that we do need to move forward because there are people who want to do the right thing. And I'm going to have to, at that point, trust them to do the right thing. But I would like this moratorium period to move forward for this short period of time to see if we can get the unicameral to address this issue.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Yes.
Can I make one more comment?
Sure.
Thank you, I appreciate giving me a second turn to speak. I really appreciate and appreciate you, people indulging me for that. One other point that I want to throw out there that is just kind of like weighing on me that I want to throw, that I just feel the need to say, is that I think that the narrative is that a moratorium somehow is the only way that the legislature will pick this up. And I don't believe that us passing a moratorium discourages or encourages the legislature from acting on this. So the impression that I've gotten is if we don't do a moratorium, then the legislature and our state friends are just gonna, you know, put their hands up for it. And I don't, I don't believe that. I don't think that this, not having a moratorium go through prevents the state side from working on their issues.
Councilperson Shob?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Mine's, and I saw Councilwoman Raybold have her hand up. There's a young man in the audience that would like to speak, and I'd like you to explain where we are in the process as far as allowing or not allowing public hearing.
We're not allowing.
Yeah, and because would...
We've already had our...
Had a public hearing last week.
Right.
And we're only in the voting session.
Correct. Councilperson Raybold.
Well, I remain optimistic because we have heard from the nonprofit groups out there that are partnering with the neighborhood associations, that are working with Senator Wishard and Senator Geist on the state side. They have a great understanding of the concerns that the neighborhoods have raised, but they're forming coalitions and working with our legislatures to really fine tune this and provide the accountability and the standards that we all recognize. Even probation and parole recognizes there are not that uniformity of standards. And the good news is there is a willingness on their part to work on that. And I remain hopeful that with greater participation, we can get something done or at least work with the executive committee in the state of Nebraska that has oversight of this to put something in place because they need to understand how important this is. And like with many things that the city of Lincoln does, it's a model that other cities across the state of Nebraska are going to be using because it's not just transitional housing in the city of Lincoln. There is a tremendous need, as we all recognize and understand, in the city of Lincoln, in Omaha, in the central part of Nebraska, in the western part of Nebraska. And so, I think we're doing a good service. I think the moratorium is a step in the right direction so that we can allow these organizations to continue to work on finding solutions that is very supportive of transitional housing and working with the neighborhood and standards that take care of those individuals that participate in transitional housing.
Okay. Any other comments? Questions? Please call the roll on the motion to change the date to January thirty first?
Yes.
I have a question, Chair. For clarification, the date was to be changed to January thirty first, twenty twenty one. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Councilman Shob had identified it was on line fourteen of the substitute ordinance. That date is also reflected on line two of that ordinance. Does that also need to be changed?
Yes.
Yes, it does. Thank you for that.
Will you accept that as a second? Jane, I think you second it.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Saul.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
No.
Christensen?
No.
McGuinness?
No.
Motion carried four three.
Okay.
The main motion?
Now the main motion.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
No.
Christensen?
No.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGuinness?
No.
Motion carried four three.
Okay, so that takes care of our voting session, correct?
Correct. Next section is resolutions. First readings are items nine A and nine B. This first reading and related resolutions is item ten A. Section eleven is our pending list date certain, items eleven A through eleven C, with action date of December seventh, twenty twenty. And our pending list items are items twelve A through twelve C.
Okay, at this point, anyone wishing to address the council on a matter that's not on this agenda and not planned to appear on a future agenda may do so at this microphone session. Individuals are allowed a total of five minutes to speak regardless of the number of topics. So, if you'd like to come forward and announce your name.
My name is Antonio Moreno, seven three four nine, South Thirty Third Street. On Saturday, November seventh, we canceled the twenty twenty Lincoln Veterans Parade to welcome the Vietnam veterans. Not directly because of COVID or by directive of city officials. We, the parade directors and planning committee, canceled out of respect for our fellow veterans and community supporters. This year has been a roller coaster of, a roller coaster minefield with stress and tension at a constant boiling point. So many events, activities and holidays canceled and scrutinized. To the common question we were asked, is this parade still on? Excuse me, sorry. The answer had always been yes. It may not look the same, but we'll still have the parade as best we can. This look I refer to as a reverse parade, or it also could be called a drive-through parade. That plan was to have the parade, parade units set up their displays on the roadside and have the spectators drive down the middle. This idea was first brought up in the spring and it was our backup plan in case the pandemic got really bad in the fall. A drive-through parade is not a true honor for our heroes who have never been properly welcomed home after our brutal war. With that, the theme for our Vietnam vets would have been dropped in the, for the year and try again for twenty twenty one. It may have seemed like a bad idea to hold a parade during the global pandemic. I saw as much needed positive distraction from the world today. The world a bit like it was forty-five plus years ago during the Vietnam War, sending our countrymen and loved ones to battle, under equipped with minimal knowledge to fight this foe with expectations of a swift victory. Difference today was the lack of support for our war vets received when they returned home. The protests and slander fired at them from fellow Americans, turned away from government and organizations who had promised to help them. That is the motivation, what motivates me with this parade, giving the community an opportunity to unite and correct wrongs of the past, showing our service members of the past, present and future, that our appreciation. We recognize and honor the sacrifices we have made. We have had made a infection control mitigation strategy planned in place with supplies and personnel. Plans are great, but not always going the way is expected. The issue we experienced was communication. Since July, we have been communicating and updating with the health department on the parade plans and our community's current environment. Our final plan developed for both formats was approved by Director Pat Lopez and the city of Lincoln. Issues of infection control mitigation with the crowd of participants and spectators was addressed in the best way. Volunteers were specifically tasked to sanitize high-touch areas and social distance crowd dispersment for the traditional parade format. Also, live video coverage was advertised to help reduce the numbers of in-person spectators. After every update, the, with the health department, it was assurance that is a good plan. Reports of the crowd clusters at the Lincoln Habsy the weekend before our event got concerning. I called the health department eight thirty AM on Friday the sixth for a final check-in. Ben Davies said that our event's crowd is a concern, but the plan is still good for a traditional parade. Two hours later, I received a call from Scott Holmes that we need to switch over to a reverse parade. What changed in that two hours that wasn't apparent all week? The hospitals and medical staff have been running at high capacity for at least ten days prior. For weeks, the restile hadn't moved. Why didn't we get any word earlier in the week instead of the less than two days before? That time was for picking up equipment, final coordination of contractors, free staging of signs and barriers. That last minute notice added emergency communication with the planning committee, parade units and media. Reorganizing the placement of TV cameras, MC announcers and portable toilets. I know if it was a reverse parade, we would lose grand marshals in some parade units, but when the participant numbers went from over forty to only fifteen and absolutely no bands, what was, that was the point of a tough decision. It was no longer something to call in honor for our heroes. As a veteran, I looked at this as a sad display of what all was sacrificed. It wouldn't be fair to my brothers and sisters or any of the community supporters backing us. It is better to scrub this mission and reallocate resources for the next. We do want to know the answer to what changed in that two hours. We want to know what has been done about it and we want to know this will not happen again. Communication is crucial in everything, but is often the most ignored. In addition...
Can you wrap this up?
Yes, I'm almost done, thank you. In addition to this, as a city-supported event, we want to reserve time for a pre- and post-parade televised press conference, also to reduce our expenses by adding the required LPD support for the parade into the city's annual budget. We are all, an all-volunteer organization focused on honor and not profit. At the end of a successful celebration, we give a generous donation to a local organization who serves our veterans and their families. We are working together for the same goal.
Okay, thank you. For the record, Mr. Marino is the Lincoln Veterans Parade Commander. Okay. Okay. Anybody else like to come forward at this time?
Jim Bunch again. I'm, Mr. Marino read the official Lincoln Parade, Veterans Parade Executive Committee communication. That's the official stance of the committee. And we do appreciate the working relationship we have with city officials. I know many of you are, have been very supportive from day one of this parade. So my comments following are, as Jim Bunch, Navy veteran, private citizen of Lincoln. It takes a solid year of planning for an event of this magnitude to come off. We have, in the past, had bands come from places as far as Axtel. Veterans looked forward to this event for many months. We chose our theme carefully, welcome home Vietnam veterans, because they never received a proper welcome. I have family members that shared stories of coming home from Vietnam and the indignation and the injustices that they were subject to, the way they were treated. When I drove along part of the route the previous Sunday for the Lincoln Habsy and I saw the throngs of people out there, that kind of gave me, I guess now in hindsight, a false sense of security that, well, our parade's next Sunday, we should be good to go. And I received a text that Friday morning saying, we're still good to go. And I turned my phone on at lunch to see that I don't, that we now had to do a reverse parade format. And like Mr. Marino stated, most of the participants of the parade wanted nothing to do with it. Our grand marshals and the Marine Corps League wanted nothing to do with it. And I'm just telling you, that was, that's just unacceptable. That is unacceptable that that happened, pulling the rug out at the last minute. If that was going to be the action, it should have been communicated long before, forty-eight hours prior. And I hope it never happens again. And I want you to be on notice that the veterans community in Lincoln and Lancaster County and across the state of Nebraska are watching how this plays out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Council. Do you like that? I wore one for you. I think that Mr. Marino would make a great replacement for any one of you. I think that he's well spoken and Mr. Bunch would probably be another good candidate for that. I'd like to back up what they said regarding the veterans community. And so with that said, their experience is operating in regime change and today is the start of the recall petitions. Obviously, it was getting signed outside and, you know, I'd like to see some regime change. So, thanks.
Thank you. Who else would like to come on up? Jane, we're going to have him come first. If you can wait a second, that'd be great.
My name's Rich Stammler. I'm a investigator of, of course, the, this COVID situation that has pretty much dominated our lives for so long. And, you know, I just see all this pushing and pulling. The state's pushing, this group, you know, this right now trying to do a recall is pulling. They're trying to pull you in other direction, both of which are based on Constitution from what everybody thinks. But I actually don't think we're ever going to make much progress with just deciding who has the right feeling about what the Constitution says. There is no real justification for law unless there's science. And without science, we have nothing but just a bunch of opinions. And I want to just take a little bit of time to educate the whole world on something that happened in 1850. And it was a guy by the name of Louis Pasteur. Every time you look at a gallon of milk, you see his name. He was basically a snake oil salesman and spent his whole life pushing what was called the germ theory. At the end of his life, it's very interesting, his, his last dying words, I don't know if it's exact, but real close to his last dying words were this. He says, "The pathogen is nothing, the terrain is everything." Now, what does that mean? It means you have a personal responsibility to get your own immune system in order. The whole idea of contagion, he rejected that, or he promoted contagion. But there's a famous, another famous individual, Frenchman as well at the same time by the name of Bechamp. I'm saying it wrong, but it's B-E-C-H-A-M-P. This is the most important piece of history for everyone in the world right now to understand. Now, I might be wrong, but I'm giving you a very clear historical context to understand the difference between dragging out this COVID thing to the end of time and starting to make some progress where everybody's not just pushing and pulling each other around with, you're killing my loved ones, or you don't care, or whatever. We've got a whole new form of discrimination out there now with the maskers and the non-maskers. Now, Bechamp basically said that Louis Pasteur was a liar, a plagiarizer and a thief. It's interesting, he did finally wake up on his deathbed. But the point is, is it, it's the terrain and contagion and the way that is being promoted by the world right now is the biggest lie in the his, medical and disease-related lie in the history of the world. I'm going to give you another reference point by an M.D. retired by the name of Thomas Coan, C-O-W-A-N, like cow with a A-N. He's written a book that was just published on the 29th of September. It consolidates an awful lot of these issues related to health, related to the vaccines, related to everything. He may not be right on everything, but he's right in the sense that we all need to either have the truth, but we also need to have a good, solid contrary position to be able to stand, to, to, to actually stand up against our position. You will not be educated unless you understand this, I'm just telling you. Does my time run out?
No.
Okay, one minute.
His name is Thomas Coan. You don't have to buy his book. If you try to buy his book through Amazon, it's been censored. Luckily Barnes &amp; Noble still keeps it. This says a lot. See, you haven't probably heard. Has anybody heard about Bechamp and Pasteur here on the council? Has anybody?
Louis Pasteur.
Have you? Okay. Occasionally, I find somebody in a health food store that's even heard of this. The point of the matter is, is that the only thing that's going to slow down this pushing and pulling that we all have in this world is the truth. And if what Pasteur come to understand on his deathbed isn't the truth and what Bechamp said and what a lot of other people like me, I'm 67 years old, and, you know, I'm responsible. I need to take responsibility for my health. Has my time expired?
Yep.
Yes.
Can you wrap it up?
I, I hope that I've impressed everyone with this important fact of history that you can verify yourself. And before you have any more opinions, get online, look it up yourself and be educated and not be like the some majority of the world that's in terror and promoting the greatest virus of all, which is fear and lack of love and possible chance of reconciliation. Because if we don't have that, your children and grandchildren are going to be just like mine. No future.
Thank you. Matt?
Jane Kinsey with Watch Dogs. We have serious problems in this city. We have serious problems in our country. It's divided in liberal and conservative and you have to be naive not to see it in Lincoln, Nebraska, or else a bleeding heart liberal that wants to make that happen. Please don't tell us, Ms. Ray Bold, your thoughts of, uh, this is not what it is. People can see who have good sense. You don't have to be a genius to see it. The mayor is pushing an agenda. She has fired and replaced some minorities in positions of authority in the city. There's nothing wrong with that as it is, but it's a pattern. And now she's after the police chief. I have spoken to some people who are good friends of his and he is walking a thin line to try to keep his position. So what she has done and what you have approved is to allow this committee to be supposedly diversified. You're going to have more complaints, more arguments-
Point of order.
And eventually, he may have to be-
Point of order. This is an item that we've already had.
Okay, well, if that's over the line, fine. Why all of a sudden do we have to have diversity in leadership? You know, Lincoln's been a diversified community for a long time and all of a sudden it's become an issue. There's a recall that about to occur. But $300,000 is a small price to play, pay, to get this put before the people of Lincoln to make a decision. Nobody knows how it's going to turn out. We may have a different council here. I wouldn't necessarily want different. I would like for you to think about things rather than from a political viewpoint, but more from a, what's good of Lincoln. And the way it's going now, it is not good. We wouldn't have a recall if there wasn't dissension about what is going on with the council and the mayor. All we can do is hope that right will win out, whatever it is, and if we have to suffer, that eventually justice will be done. I'm very concerned about our city at this time and our country. The financial situation is not good with the JPA. It is not good with the city. And then when we have politics thrown into it, it's even worse. Think about what's going on and put aside your own political beliefs and think of what's good for Lincoln. This dissension needs to be worked out to the good of everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. Who would like to come up next?
Roy Helm, 2750 South 13th Street. Good evening. There's a lot of anger and frustration and a lot of it is becoming very personal and hateful and that's very unfortunate, especially as we approach this time of year. This is Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving. And granted, we're being asked and it's strongly suggested that we sequester ourselves, minimize our gatherings, reduce travel, and it makes sense because it's better to separate ourselves for Thanksgiving than to potentially end up in the ICU for Christmas. And if we have patience and tolerance and trust science, things can improve. We have the vaccines that are on the horizon and that's something to be thankful for. The sun comes up every morning. That's something to be thankful for. We don't need to be dwelling on what's wrong all the time. I have my issues, I have my frustrations, but I am, I'm thankful to live in this city. I'm thankful that we have this leadership. I'm thankful for the direction that we've been given and I'm thankful that there are people in our government that are concerned about our safety and well-being. It's a difficult time to be alive. It's something that we'll take with us, hopefully to our graves in the distant future. It's something our children and our grandchildren will remember. It'll be in the history books. We need to rise above this and we need to appreciate what we have and not constantly look at what's wrong because there is so much right. I'm so happy that I live in a country where those of us that have a little extra can give to those who don't. That's community, that's caring, that's, that's something I'm thankful for. So I thank you all for what you do and as I've said before, I may not always agree, but I do sincerely thank you for the work you do. It's not easy and I hope that you all have a very safe and joyous Thanksgiving. And please be well and thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Samuel Lyon. I am one of the ones involved in the recall effort, lnkrecall.com. I wanted to come in and just give you an update on how things went. I just spent the last couple hours out front, in front of the building with about 300 of your constituents, talking about, you know, your, the 60-word statements on your recall petitions and your responses to those. I can tell you that many of them were not happy that the city notified us this morning that your constituents weren't allowed to sign the petitions inside in the warm, but they were forced outside into the cold. They did not care for that, so I just wanted to pass that on to you. But it didn't slow them down. The, the, the attitude and the, was good and no one seemed super, super angry about it. They just thought it, it seemed odd that with this big hallway and warm space, flu season going around, that, you know, they would be required to stand out in the cold to exercise their civic opportunity. So take that as you will. Some of which, some of, some of them signed the mayor's petition, but then came in to see how some of the voting here tonight would go and then returned to sign petitions with some of your names on them. But they wanted to wait until they saw how a vote in here would go. I noticed today when I picked up the, the recall petitions from the election commissioner's office, some of the rebuttals, and I wanted to, to take a couple of these. One is the Mayor Baird's and her response is, as an elected official, my primary responsibility is to keep our community safe. Interesting. She kind of goes on, talks about a special election and during this emergency, it's irresponsible and unnecessary to have a, a special election that could cost $300,000. And I thought it was interesting that she said to, basically, we should be, we should be concentrating on the emergency. We're in a pandemic and to do really anything unnecessary during this emergency. How was the paper over there, Jane?
It's doing quite well.
Okay. I mean, we've had people called out for being on their cell phone. I didn't know that you could catch up on the, on the news, but it's fine, go ahead.
It's just some editorials about the recall.
So, so it's interesting that the mayor last week would ask for something that many people would, would say is, is this really necessary? Is this really- Is this really needed right now to, to try to fix something that's not broken?" She also, she also talked about the cost, and I did want to mention that. Actually, all of you talked about the cost, and I thought that was interesting. And it is, it's interesting that it seems from the taxpayer that politicians are never worried about saving money until it's recall time, until it's something that they don't want. And then it's like, "Well, you can fire me, but it's going to cost you a lot of money." I just don't think that's a persuasive argument. The mayor didn't seem concerned with paying Pat Lopez $14,000 a month. That's a lot for an RN salary. And she didn't seem concerned paying her almost $50,000 a year than the previous person who held that position. She wasn't concerned with money when she paid $97,000 for a report on the, her version of the, um, the Green New Deal, recommending switching things from gas to electric, building mass transportation, building another water source at a estimated cost of over $1 billion. She didn't seem concerned about money then. The thing I love most about this recall is, being an efficiency guy, let's say it does cost $300,000 to do a recall. This one, you get five for the price of one. And that is a bargain.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward to speak tonight?
Order, order. No, I'm just kidding. How's it going? Jimmy Light, fight the good fight. I'm going to switch it up. You know, I met you guys my last two meetings. Got some heat. I'm doing honorable mentions and some of my favorite quotes. You know, "There comes a time when one must take a position that is neither politic, nor safe, nor popular, but he must take it because his conscience tells him it's right." And that was Martin Luther King Jr. This nation was founded on one principle above all else. The, the requirement that we stand up for what we believe, no matter the odds or the consequences. And that was Captain America. "You liberate the minds of men, and ultimately, you will liberate the bodies of men." That was Marcus Mosiah Garry. Now, this goes back all the way from like August 17th. Big, big thank you to Roy Helms. This man is out here every day or every time he's at this meeting, you know? That's a lot of time spent from a bunch of, the tactic these organized governments use is long sleepy litigation. So you fall asleep, quit paying attention. This guy's spent a lot of time here, so thank you, Roy Helm. John Herms, you already know. Jane Kinsey, thank you. And sorry if I mispronounce your name. Corinne, Corinne Wilson, still looking for you. Can we free Ernest Jackson too? Big ups to that man. Thank you. We got Liam Christensen, big ups. Thank you. He said the rhetoric was more fitting coming from the council members in favor of the British and the revolution, which I thought was, you know, he kind of took the words right out of my mouth or mind. Let's see. Kelly Seacrest. We need all these people back here. Fan. Chan Blight, sorry if I messed up your name. Thank you. Jason Whitmer, thank you so much for fighting the good fight. We got Ozzy. You know? Oh, and Nick Hernandez, I believe, would be a great candidate for, um, to hold a seat up here. He talked about the, um, positive, not the, the mental, you know, mental health issues, like the negative, but the mental, the positive part of it because perception in the mind, you know, it's, it's where the fine line gets to. Well, you perceive that and I perceive this. I thought that was great about the mental health. I think it's Trevor Riley. I think Trevor Riley was the, uh, in support. I think he was a, a veteran in support of the cannabis. And he came to testify on, uh, why that got pulled from the ballot. Thank you so much for coming down here. I got a big ups, my, uh, uh, my haters. I got Jazari Qual, um, and standing for Lincoln too. And I think they're still awesome people. I know I can be a little scary sometimes, but I still feel like, you know, pushing a lot of toxic, uh, division when there's Americans out here that are fighting, they're choosing to sacrifice their health for their rights. And that's why they're out here. I'm not out here not wearing a mask. I provide solutions for all. I got no problem wearing a mask. I have a problem not following, I have a problem following unconstitutional, unconstitutionalities. Unconstitutionalities, I call, foreign influence, like our monetary system, these bankers, politicians, the ill intentions in these leaders' hearts, and all they try to do is save them money. I'm not fighting against y'all. I'm not trying to. I don't think, you know, y'all are, I'm not trying, I don't curse any man. I don't wish curses upon anybody. Is that my time? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you guys.
Is there anybody else that'd like to come forward tonight?
I thought we were at a city council meeting. I didn't realize we were at an awards show. Oh, because the people that I advocate for want me to say some things, so. Where's the camera at? Up there? So I really don't have a whole lot to say to the council members, but I wanted to talk to the people of Lincoln because there's a crazy event that's happening. There are people who are trying to recall city council members as well as our mayor with no backup plan. I like to think of myself as a person who does what's logical and a person that does what feels right. And trying to recall elected officials in the middle of a pandemic when we're the fifth worst-ranked state in the country is not very logical. There's no plan for this. As you guys heard, these people come up here and talk. It's all over the place. There's no legitimate plan. I'll tell you what this is. This is people sitting at home, bored in quarantine, watching TikTok videos and wondering how they can go viral next by doing something. And this is what they're trying to do. I had the pleasure of speaking with an amazing nurse from Bryan last week on a livestream, and she explained to me what's happening in these ICU. She's an ICU COVID nurse. What is happening in these hospitals is absolutely horrible. Families are coming in and dying together. A husband, a wife, a parent, a child, they're going into these hospitals and dying together. As you guys heard, this other gentleman came up here and was talking about how COVID is fake and COVID is a lie. I bet you a million dollars he would not stand in the face of somebody who's lost their family member to this horrible virus and tell them "Your family member died, but it wasn't from COVID." I have seen ridiculous things online. These people, Lincoln Recall, they're the same people who are on No Mask Lincoln. They're the same people who are participating in these Stop the Steal rallies. You heard that other woman come up here and complain that the mayor is hiring and firing people, but she's probably the same one that commends Donald Trump for doing the exact same in Washington. I'm a very big fan and preacher of practicing what you preach. These people want to complain that they're locked in quarantine and have to wear a mask, but they want to have Thanksgiving with their parents and their families. So what happens when Christmas time comes around and the hospitals are overrun and there has to be care rationing? People don't think ahead to things like that. Teachers are overworked. They're tired just as well as our nurses. They fear for their safety. To my knowledge, LPS waived the requirement to having a teaching degree. And if you have a four-year, if you have a four-year bachelor degree, then you can be a substitute teacher. I don't see any of these people signing up to do that. They want to complain that our community is divided. They want to complain that we're not standing together when we're in the middle of a pandemic. But do you see these people gifting any Christmas gifts to children who do not have any? Are they inviting people to their homes or going out and feeding the homeless that do not have a place to go on Thanksgiving? I do not see that happening. They want to come up here. They want to have their five minutes. They want to complain that they're feeling discriminated against and oppressed? It is absolutely ridiculous that something temporarily is going to throw people in an absolute chaos and say, "You're fired, you're fired, you're fired. I feel oppressed. I feel discriminated against. So I'm going to go up here and claim that the city doesn't need to be diverse." I'm very disappointed in Lincoln. I am very disappointed in Lincoln. Oh, I forgot to mention, there is a, um, a small business in Lincoln called Uniform Connection. Yeah, uh, they're a part of No Mask Lincoln. They were soliciting netted masks so that are see-through, right? And mind you, these are the same people who provide scrubs to our healthcare workers who smile in their faces, but behind their backs they're stabbing them, causing them to be exhausted, increasing their workload by not doing what is absolutely necessary for the good of everybody in Lincoln right now.
One minute.
I'm a very busy person. I had to clear my entire schedule to make it here in time just because they always come to these meetings. They always say things online, so we all got to come back and have the last word because this is absolutely ridiculous. Wear your mask. Thanksgiving is a day that you can miss if it means that you get to have more in the future with your family. Christmas is okay to miss this year if it means that you'll have 10 more years with your family members. The people of Lincoln need to do what's right, and trying to recall the mayor and city council members in the middle of a pandemic is not logical and doesn't feel right. Because I guarantee you, these people who are up here saying that this needs to happen, they're the ones that are going to be complaining, the same No Mask Lincoln people, the same Stop the Steal people. When your family member's in the hospital and there's care rationing, they're going to feel entitled and privileged that their family member who is sick needs care over yours. They don't care about you. They care about their privilege, and they feel like they're being discriminated against, which is absolutely ludicrous. So if you sign this petition, you are going to really divide the city and put us in a horrible position in the middle of a global pandemic.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward and speak at this time? No. You've already had your speech. No. You don't. You are unable to.
No.
I'm just providing.
We're going to be done with this whole thing if you.
Jimmy Light, Sheriff 2022. There's your solution. And I'm trying to beat a board member too, Jazari.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Uh, second, yes. And moved in second that we adjourn. Please call the roll.
Sure.
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero.
We stand adjourned.